Heather?
What is that?
Are we all ready?
Who's it coming from?
From Heather? I'm not sure.
It's from her too.
Heather assist from this one?
Is this from you? Oh, man.
Really?
Uh-oh. I guess somewhere else getting a budget bump this year.
Are you bribing us? What do you need out there? Something's on the field, right?
Are you guys okay with those blinds open? It's not in your eyes to match, you're okay?
You can close them whatever makes you comfortable.
Yeah.
There you go.
Light a couple candles.
Careful Fran, you're strong. I've pulled one of those down before, it's really embarrassing.
Heather just bribed us.
Don't know his own strength.
Wonder what she needs.
Oh, we're waiting on Mr. Price.
I know, me too.
We're gonna love her better. It's warmer back there.
A session on that next year PD.
I'll be like, you don't need anything besides an extra shirt.
It'll work pretty soon, it'll feel real cold out here.
Yeah.
Think of the alternative. Could be, man. That other building used to get oosey on.
We're waiting for Ken.
That's not cool, okay.
Heather Conkle? Heather Conkle? Is that a Ted Lasso shirt?
Yes.
I was so sad when that ended. It was a good one. And it didn't get torn up. All right, Ken's here.
I'll call this regular session of the Thursday, August 3rd, 2023 Board of Trustees meeting for the Victor Valley Union High School District to order. We do have a few things to report from closed session. Under 2.2 Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment/Employment/Discipline/Dismissal/Release/ resignation/Transfer Agreements in Closed Session, the Board of Education took action to approve Tiffany Hampton as the Director of Student Services. The motion was made by Kent Crosby, seconded by Jose Berrios, and it passed unanimously with five votes. Would you like to introduce?
Good evening Board, Superintendent, and everybody else in the audience. It is my pleasure to bring forth to you a proud principal from Colton who may take over that Director of Student Services job, Ms. Tiffany Hampton.
Good evening Board President, Board Members, Executive Cabinet, Superintendent, members of the audience. Thank you very much for the opportunity to work here in Victor Valley Union High School District. Very excited to continue doing the work that has already been done here in the district. I am proud of the work that I have done in Colton, but ready to
Tomorrow. It'll work pretty soon, it'll feel real cold out here.
Yeah.
Think of the alternative. Could be.
Really?
That other building used to get oicy on. Okay, oh, they're ready but not?
We're waiting for Kent.
That's right, cool, okay.
Heather Conkle. Heather Conkle. Heather Conkle. Is that a Ted Lasso shirt?
Yes.
That was so sad when that ended. It was a good one. And it didn't get torn up. All right, Kent's here. So I'll call this regular session of the Thursday, August 3rd, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting for the Victor Valley Union High School District to order. We do have a few things to report from closed session. Under 2.2 Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Appointment/Employment/Discipline/Dismissal/Release/ resignation/transfer agreements in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve Tiffany Hampton as the Director of Student Services. The motion was made by Kent Crosby, seconded by Jose Berrios, and it passed unanimously with five votes. Would you like to introduce?
Good evening Board, Superintendent, and everybody else in the audience. It is my pleasure to bring forth to you a proud principal from Colton's, we take over that Director of Student Services job, Ms. Tiffany Hampton.
Good evening Board President, Board Members, Executive Cabinet, Superintendent, members of the audience. Thank you very much for the opportunity to work here in Victor Valley Union High School District. Very excited to continue doing the work that has already been done here in the district. I am proud of the work that I have done in Colton, but ready to get to work and get going here. It's been amazing already, just talking to the staff that I have talked to already, going through the process, the interview process, and even meeting them there. And so, again, just ready to start the work, and I'm very humbled and glad to be here. Thank you.
It's a short interview process, only four of them.
Four.
I want to make sure, really driving up and down the hill, you know what it's about. Yeah, don't tell her about the call and pass, okay?
It's official now, now it's now.
Welcome Tiffany. Our next item, payment to Vernamin German LLP. Is it German or German? Shanti? For, well, either or. And a contract with Professional Tutors of America in relation to the due process settlement agreement for student with SSID 9312002267. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on pay as a compromise in settlement to Vernamin German LLP and contract with Professional Tutors of America per due process settlement agreement for student SSID 2633812784, OAH case number 2023050497. All claims from this settlement have been waived. The motion was made by Kent Crosby, seconded by Rosie Hinojos, and passed unanimously with five votes. A bid deficiency, in closed session, the Board of Education took action on payment approval for outstanding invoices for Sturtel Coney USA Inc. These invoices are for a purchase contract for in-ground lifts for the Transportation Department that was board-approved on November 17th, 2022. We have subsequently learned that the Sourcewell contract that we piggybacked on is not accepted as valid piggyback by our County Office of Education. This motion was made by Rosie, seconded by Jose, and it also passed with five unanimous votes. And then our last one is a bid deficiency for West Trucks International Inc. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on payment approval for outstanding invoices for the 2223 school year for West Trucks International Inc. These invoices were for the purchases of supplies that took the total purchases of supplies from West Truck International above the bid limit of $109,300. This motion was made by Jose, seconded by Rosie, and it also passed with five unanimous votes. At this time, a pledge of allegiance. Do we have any students in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Jeff White, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Some move.
Rosie? And Barbara was seconded, I think she touched a little bit before. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. 4.1 Guidelines for Public Comment, Carl, we have two.
So if you wish to address the Board on any topic, including any item on the agenda, please submit your comments to the Board President by completing their request to address the Board card prior to the meeting and submitting it to the Assistant Superintendent. The President will recognize those who desire to speak, either during the public comment section of the agenda or before the particular item. Each speaker should move quickly to the microphone and announce your name before beginning your presentation. Meetings are taped for later transcription. Each speaker is allocated a maximum of three minutes. The President may choose to limit the topic to ten, no more than twenty minutes, if substantial numbers of people wish to address the Board on one topic. Testimony should be brief and to the point. Speakers should not repeat testimony already presented. Board action may not legally be taken on any item not specifically listed on the agenda. The Board may ask that such items be placed on the next agenda for consideration. Testimony is not protected from damage claims for slander. Public charges or allegations may result in legal action being brought by those individuals. The Board values constructive community comments and suggestions. It welcomes the participation in the democratic process.
Thank you. Our first speaker, Dr. Chabaz. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, I am Dr. Sarah Chabaz. I have a connection to this district, a lot of you don't know that, but I had my first teaching assignment here, Silverado High School, in 1998. And ten of my eleven children went through the high school district.
All right.
Okay, all right. I'm here representing the High Desert Section of the National Council of Negro Women. We write that as HDS NCNW because it's easier. NCNW is an organization that was founded by Mary McLeod Bethune in 1935. The High Desert Chapter, or the High Desert Section, was chartered in 1982. Our mission is to advocate for uplift and support African-American women, their families, and the community. Our goal is to work with you and the other community organizations to ensure that the OCR report findings are adhered to and addressed and resolved. And also to encourage and get African-American parents to be more involved in their students' academic, discipline, and overall well-being. So I just wanted to let you know that we're here, and we're here to work with you, and just let us know what we need to do. We will meet with you, and we are dedicated to the cause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a card?
You know what, I didn't bring any in with me.
I have one, let me give you mine.
Okay.
How are you doing, Mrs. Chabaz?
What am I doing now?
How are you?
How am I doing? I'm doing well.
Doing well?
Yes.
How's Barstow?
Barstow's well, I'll go back tomorrow.
Tomorrow, you go back?
Yes.
Professor at the Barstow.
Professor at Barstow Community College.
Oh, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Laverne Stryvin? I apologize if I'm saying that wrong.
I wonder if we could ask Chris if he could turn up the mic? I don't think the mic is working.
Okay.
It's a little bit low.
Yeah.
Carl, can you make sure that that mic is pointed towards the speaker? Or Heather, or someone?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Oh, yeah. It was just, it was your voice.
I don't think I need a speaker, but. I am here to say thank you. The last time I was here, I asked you guys if you could find a way to pay the eighty-dollar fee that covers the background checks for parents to volunteer. And you've done that. Thank you. And now, the real work begins. We gotta get out there and get the parents. Okay, so we're looking forward to working with you and all the community organizations to do just that. Again, thank you so much.
Next, we have our VBT A report. Mike?
Hello Board, Cabinet, my name is Mike Mayo, I'm Victor Valley Teachers Association President. This is my second year, so here we go. All right. I wanted to say thank you first for the management retreat. I'm sorry I'm not one of the ones who's able to make it. We did have Amanda Ballard there and Jared Nichols. And what they've reported is communication. It seems like it's a big key, all right? So focusing on communication, which is great, because this is exactly what our association is doing too. It seems like communication is almost always an ordeal that we try to get past. You know, oftentimes if you could send an email and you don't even know if it's really being read. And so, you try to find more creative ways to reach out to people so you can make sure your message is being heard. And that's exactly what we're doing with VBT A, and I'm glad to see the district's moving in the same kind of direction. I appreciate the effort that was put into the professional development days that we just had. I did speak briefly with Dr. Yi about some of those things, and we can discuss some of the other stuff after the debrief through the team huddles. I heard that the team huddles were some of the best parts of that. I'm glad I was part of that too. Seeing that many English teachers around the district, including some of the new members that we have as English teachers in the district, was really great. We could share experiences and kind of get a better understanding of where we go at different sites with our departments. All right, the new member orientation. Before we had our lunch, before we had VBT A time with the new members, the message that I was hearing from HR, the general tone, the message that HR was giving was very positive, which is very nice. Because we, oftentimes with new members, we scare, we scare them to death about certain things to avoid, and I understand those things are kind of, they're important, you know, you want to be careful, but at the same time, you want them to start off with a positive note, and I was happy to see that. So thank you very much. I did have a chance to meet over fifty new members at that event. I would like to say thank you also to Jose Berrios and Rosie Hinojos, who also came in, they had some lunch with us. And I hope that they were able to meet some of the new members and got to engage with them in some way. Heritage and legacy programs. And it was actually Heather Conkle that reminded me of this principle. When we were going through some stuff earlier today, that we have heritage and legacy programs at all comprehensive schools. We saw that there was some success at Adelanto High School, and I'm glad that we're expanding that and we're reaching out to not just African-American populations specifically, but what makes up probably around two-thirds of our student population, the Hispanic population too. And so I'm glad to see that that's occurring. And there are other things that we can talk about. A lot of that we can do in smaller discussions and things. For right now, let's just be happy that we have a new year. We let the dust settle, we see what everything looks like, and then we move on from there. So thank you very much, have a good night.
Do we have a CSCE member to give their report? Stephanie? Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items, which includes 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, which were the minutes for all of our June meetings.
Some move.
Rosie? And Jose? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Moving on to consent for business services, which includes all of the 7.1 through 7.12.
Some move.
Barbara?
Second.
And a second, I think this one I heard from Kent. Barbara and Kent. Okay, any discussion, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. And now for consent items for Ed Services, which includes item 8.1 through 8.13. Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, now I'll take a motion to approve. Is that Rosie?
Barbara.
Barbara and Rosie. Okay, Barbara and Rosie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Section nine, consent for HR department, 9.1 and 9.2.
Some move.
Second, that was Rosie and Jose, any discussion, questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Now, action items, 10.1, purchase of CDW-G Chromebooks. Your money, would you like to speak on this? By Barbara, second by Jose.
We're asking the Board to go ahead and approve a purchase of a thousand Chromebooks and twenty Chromebook cards, due to class size reductions, of course, and we're going to need more Chromebooks, so this would be the purchase to be able to do so.
Okay, question, if this, if that thousand creates a surplus of ones, you know, the ones that we're trying to kind of thin out, do we have kind of an idea or plan to maybe give them, for lack of a better word, to students that are leaving? Because I know that's what some schools do, you get your Chromebook for four years, when you leave, it's yours. You know, in our mind, it may be obsolete and, you know, blah blah, but to a lot of them, it's the only computer they got. That's just why I'm wondering, so instead of selling them to some company for ten cents on the dollar?
Sure. We are working on a plan to make sure that, you know, we're looking at having students actually have Chromebooks to be able to take home as well too. And again, it's a plan that we're having in place, however, we can absolutely look into that and see, you know.
When we retire them, what are we gonna do?
I think Adelant, I think Victor L does that as well too, am I correct? The students kind of follow them and then they take them home.
We don't want them to be ahead of us.
They probably are.
But didn't I see somewhere in the, in the contract that they charge us forty dollars to, for a Chromebook to turn it back in and they recycle it or whatever? That they charge us forty dollars per Chromebook?
Is that like a D-waste amount?
Yeah, nothing like that.
Probably, you know, I'd have to look in Dave, and I know Dave couldn't be here this evening, but.
I can see where it'd be better to give it to the student to take home.
Well, at least they practice on their games.
Most of those aren't gaming, gaming computers.
No, I'm just saying.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And then we have our action items for human resources, certificated and classified personnel reports. I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
That was Kent and Jose, did I hear you for a second? Okay, and Mike, would you speak to that?
Sure, so these are our job descriptions and filling positions, existing positions that we currently have in the district, as well as the very back for some of our coaching stipends, we're making those on our board too. So they are all addressed out in front of you. And any questions, let me know, as far as if there's any pieces on there, your questions on?
No, it was already answered.
No.
All right.
Part of it was answered.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. And now we have our information discussion items, conference requests, our educational study trip requests.
Need you to do, you got 11.2, the classified report.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did both, I apologize. So I'll entertain a motion in a second for the classified personnel report.
Second.
That was Kent and Rosie?
I think it was.
Rosie and Jose, thank you.
We must've seen this bobsy twice today, Rosie.
Mike, would you speak to the classified personnel report?
Sure, no problem, so what we're doing in this, this report here, of course, we are filling some new hire positions that just existed. We're filling some existing vacancies also as well. We're flying, and we already kind of talked in closed session about that new position over at, as the School Office Assistant over at Victor Valley High School to fill a need that's over that school setting. A couple of interpreter stipends that kind of came a little after what we wanted last thing, but they're in there now to make sure our interpreters are stipends. And that's basically the, the next, so this, this process.
All right, any questions or concerns?
No, I just, I would like.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, yours first.
I would like to say, Mike, thank you very much. I've been in the district, various positions and all, for forty-three years, and to have a complete staff at this time, as we're beginning the school year, is something that's just unheard of in this state. And so I want to thank you and all the people who've contributed to it. I want that to be out there for you, because it is unique, so thank you.
And I just have one thing, when we're putting salaries in the board agenda, is there any, I know there's a weight, but is there some way to maybe an asterisk or whatever that they can see that ninety-nine thousand isn't the salary? The ninety-nine is their salary, their statutory benefits, their health and welfare and all that, because that stuff adds up to a lot, and it's something that we have to do. And it doesn't give the misconception that certain positions are getting paid a whole lot of money.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we can.
We can put that into, into an asterisk that just kind of puts all the mandatory, the statutory.
So the public can see that, that, you know, their salary is this. The other stuff, everybody gets.
Yes, we can do that.
All right, hearing no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Now for information discussion items, we have 12.1, 12.2, the conference reports and educational study trip requests. Any questions? Staff reports, we'll move to business services, Shanti?
Hi, thank you. So I'd just like to say welcome back to our teachers and any of our staff, you know, that were not on calendar over the summer. Welcome Tiffany, I wasn't able to meet you yet, but I'm excited that you're here, welcome. As far as business services, we are, we are ramping up on our year in close for the prior school year, and we are already preparing for a couple of added visits. And we are already preparing for a couple of audit visits that are on schedule. We've been communicating and working with school sites about some audit visits that are going to take place to take a look at their ASB and their attendance accounting. And other than that, I'm just, we're just really excited for tomorrow's district kickoff and looking forward to the first day of school. And welcome our students back.
Thank you. Ed services, Ramoni?
First of all, good evening. Welcome Tiffany. We're so excited to have you onboard. I know that Tiffany does a lot of work with Equity in her former district, so that's going to be the experience and the lens that she's going to come to this position with. So, we're excited about that. Also, too, it's just been in ed services, it's been a lot of training. A lot of just, you know, campus security officers, you know, we had them for three days, LVNs, we had Read 180s, and then, of course, our PD days, Teach for Reach. And so, it's just been a lot of training. And then, so, we're excited to welcome our students back on Monday. Ed services, the team will be there to kind of support sites, you know, in the very beginning of school and also at the end of the school. We have our Evolve system go on the first day of school as well, too. So, we're going to be supporting that and ensuring that it works properly and so forth. So, again, just looking forward to starting this new year, and I just think it gets better every time. So, excited about that.
Thank you. Human resources, Mike?
Thank you very much. So, just again, also want to welcome Tiffany to the team. Congratulations on your new position. A couple of side notes, too, just to let everybody know that my old hat, Student Services, we're actually at 11,050 kids already enrolled, ready to start on Monday. So, we've never been before 11,000 kids at this time of the year. And we're hoping to get another 150, 200 kids tomorrow, then we'll catch, you know, next week, we'll catch those kids that come in late. So, just some great information. Other than that, just thank you to, you know, VVTA and CSCE for all their support and as we work through different issues and come to problem-solving matters. And hope we have a great kickoff tomorrow, and, you know, let's have a great day on Monday. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Barbara, can you share any legislation with us?
Right, no, no, I can't. Actually, this is the first year that I took off for July, the whole entire year. I mean, month. I wish I'd taken off any year. But actually, it was the first time I've taken off for the whole entire month for myself. And that was a real change for me. Not dealing with legislation, not dealing with any of the people. And I only saw Obanote yesterday. But, so, this was a time that I just kind of took off. But don't think that I'm not, haven't started. I mean, they have started on me already with all the things that they want to get passed in legislation for us. Not only this, but in Congress as well. There's some things coming up through the pipe that people are talking about as well. I will be briefed here pretty soon in Sacramento. In fact, I have to deal with them on the 25th and then on the 24th. So, then I will let you know the next time what we need to be thinking about and pushing for us, for monies, for transportation, for special ed, or whatever it is that we need to do. So, this was a very good time for me to just take off and not do anything that had to do with anything other than myself. So, it was great.
Thank you. Board member comments? We'll start with Jose.
Oh, okay. First off, welcome Tiffany. Okay, welcome to the team. Okay, so, you'll get used to that drive up the hill. It's really not that bad, okay? Now, come on, guys. To be fair, most of these guys all drive up and down the hill. Us local yokels, though, we appreciate what you're doing. All right, first thing, I did attend the management retreat both days. It was real good, and it was basically concentrated on communication. Because all of you know, whether it's your business or personal life, if you don't communicate with who you're working with, bad things happen. And they use Pearl Harbor as an example, and I think that speaks for itself, what happened there. And the more they talked about it, the more you could see, man, something like that could have been prevented, just like 9/11. But somebody didn't, point A didn't point B, so guess what? Bad things happened. But that was really good. And, you know, all the management people were there, and it was, everybody was kind of, you know, into it, because these guys were interesting, not just talking shop, but they were using these real-life examples that kind of kept you on the edge of your seat, even though you knew the end. And I also attended the new teacher, you know, meeting, you know, was there, and Rosie was there. And it was great to see all those new people. And then they told me that over half of them were experienced people that we stole from other districts. And I will say stole, but that's okay. You know, if we steal somebody good, it's our win, all right? And the baby teachers, it was really good to see them kind of happy to be here. And it was fun to talk to them. And lastly, I know Kent mentioned the 43-year thing. Well, I could say 44 for me, all right?
I'm not as old as you.
That'd be my 40. That's true. I am quite old, in dog years. But anyway, you know, the 44, the new school year's starting, and anybody that's been around school, been a teacher or anything involved in that, and this is going to happen this year, too. The day before school opens, you get that little knot in your tummy. It's like, oh, and I'm not even going to a classroom anymore. But it's still that excitement that the whole thing's starting. And Mike, I liked your statement, you know, when the dust settles, but I prefer, say, let's get this party started, guys, okay? It's going to happen whether we're there or not, so might as well make the best of it. And that's all.
All right, Kent?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Carl, and all the district office staff for the work that you guys are doing. I really do appreciate it. We have a lot of changes that need to be done, and we're starting on them. I won't say they're done, but we're starting on them. Really appreciate that. To the parents, thank you very much for continuing. We're at the point now where we need to get the parents to volunteer. And thank you very much for pushing us to pay for that, because it is something that, as teacher and coach, it was something that was very frustrating to me all those years that you'd want a parent to volunteer, but 80 bucks is 80 bucks. And it's a lot of money. And then you have to get fingerprinted, and you have to wait and all. So, thank you for pushing us as a school board, because as soon as you brought that up, it was like, what a brilliant idea. And I tried to take credit for it, but they reminded me that you were the one that brought it up. But thank you so much. Okay, thank you. But thank you so much for pushing us to do that, because that was so important to do. I appreciate that. Tiffany, welcome. We heard wonderful things about you, and we're excited about you coming onboard and joining us in the work. So, thank you for accepting the job and got lots to do in this district. I'm looking forward to tomorrow's kickoff. I'm excited for that, the new school year. Anytime there's food involved, I'm excited. So, I'm looking forward to that and seeing all the new teachers and the old teachers and classified and even the administrators. Heather, looking forward to seeing you guys, too. So...
Even the administrators. Give them a bag, Heather.
She gave you a wonderful bag. Also, looking to continue to improve our communication amongst ourselves, because I think that's the thing that's going to make difference. We're going to make lots of mistakes. I mean, that's just, we're human. We make mistakes. But as we continue to communicate, I know sometimes James over here, Mr. Campbell, who's NAACP, you know, he beats me up sometimes, but he does it nicely, you know? And we talk about things, and we discuss things, and we talk about how we can improve and stuff. And I want him to know how much I appreciate that for his insights and everything. But that's the whole thing. It's the communication. And we need to continue that with the communication. Are we going to make mistakes? Yes. Are we going to continue to make the same mistake over and over again? Hopefully not. So, thank you for that. And I'm looking forward to a wonderful year, and thank you for that.
Thank you. Barbara?
I just want to say welcome back, everybody. I hope this year will be much better. Welcome Tiffany. That's the first time I've met you. And where were you before?
Colton.
Colton. Oh, okay. Very good. Just that this year, I think, will be a great year. So, we've got a lot of new people. But they're not all new, so, at this game, so, which is really good. I think with our teachers, it's only like, what, 15 new, very brand-new teachers? But the rest of them, at least, they have nine or so many years, you know? So, that helps. I can tell you right now that there's, we have a lot of people that are sending their kids to Victor Valley High School. So, it's going to be really a change. I mean, to have 11,000 right now, today, and we're possibly going to have even more. It's growing. And not only is it growing, they are actually putting new houses up as we speak right now today in many areas. So, we're going to get a lot of other kids. The big thing this year probably going to be AI and games for kids, you know? Probably going to be part of the curriculum that's going to be talked about the most. That's what I'm hearing. Part of it is the AI and the games that kids are going to be studying. The world seems to be shifting to another world. So, those are the things that I'm hearing about. I hope the robots don't take my place.
Nobody can take your place.
But it's all, things are already happening. Something that you did not know is that with the military, they've been using this for years, all of this stuff. It's now becoming part of our world, the real world, public school world. So, it's going to be a change in the way we see things and the way we function. Our Gen Z kids and our other kids are going to be totally different. Their world's going to be different from the world we have today. So, that's what I'm hearing. So, we'll be learning more and more about that as we go along to deal with our kids for tomorrow. But welcome, everybody. And thank you, Heather. Wow, I needed this.
Thank you, Barbara. Rosie?
First, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Tiffany to our district family. Looking forward to meeting you personally and sitting down and talking with you. Like to thank everybody for attending. I'm really looking forward to having our students come back, because it's always good to hear from our students and what's going on in the schools. Looking forward to that. Welcome everybody back to school and hope that everybody had a great summer. I want to thank Dr. Lorraine Collins and Angie Mayo and the rest of our staff for their hard work and great efforts in getting our students through summer school, and then finally through graduation on June 30th. I think that graduation ceremony set a completion record, but it didn't, certainly didn't diminish its meaning. It was really a great graduation. On July 24th, I had the opportunity to attend our new teachers' welcome get-together at Victor Valley's High Performance Arts Center. And I attended the luncheon sponsored by VVTA. I was able to meet and greet many of our new teachers and welcome them to our district family. There was one individual that really, really stuck out. He, when I talked to him, he said he had attended Victor Valley High School. And he had, he had problems. He had difficulty paying attention and learning. And they thought he was just a troubled kid. And he said, I got kicked out. He got kicked out of school.
I remember him. Yeah. He was my student.
Yeah. He said...
Did you kick him out?
He said he wandered around for 16 years. He did drugs. He hung around with the wrong people. And finally, he saw the light. He went back to school. He got his college degree. And then he got hired as a teacher at 47-years-old. And he's looking forward to, he's going to be a counselor. And he's hoping to help the kids get the help that he didn't get and to keep them in school. And I thought, what an inspiration. So, I congratulated him and thanked him for his hard efforts. And I told him I hoped that I ran across him at whatever school he was going to be teaching at, and I looked forward to sitting down and talking with him some more. I mean, what a great story. It just, it was just super. Anyway, Mike, you and your staff did a great job in that luncheon. That was super. I enjoyed it. And it was, like I say, it was a great opportunity to meet especially the new teachers. And it's great to see that we have a lot of teachers coming over from other districts. I mean, that was amazing. On July 31st, I also had the opportunity to attend the morning session of our Teach to Reach Summer Professional Development Days at the Adelanto High School. My thanks to Dr. Yee and Dr. Cook and the rest of our staff for the great work they did putting that together. It was a very successful program, I thought. Again, I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of the folks there. And it's great to see the enthusiasm and the raring to go to get started. And I'm looking forward to Monday for our first day of school and getting all our students going. And I think we're going to have a great year. And thanks to our superintendent, Carl, and our staff. You guys have done a great job over the summer in getting everybody, getting ready to go, getting our teachers hired. And I'm looking forward to a great year with my fellow board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. I'd like to welcome all of you that are here today. Under each of your departments for assistant suits, we cover all of our employees. And the big day is right around the corner for our students returning. But so much hard work has been done from all of our staff, even throughout the summer. So, even though the big day might be for many of the employees that came back today, many of our employees have been working nonstop. So, a thanks to them to help to make this a welcoming, nurturing environment for our students. I know that sometimes even on our worst day, that might be the best that a student has in their day. So, remember that you only have one chance to make a first impression, and our students are looking up to us, counting on us, to make sure that they're taken care of. And I know they're in good hands. I feel a lot of faith coming from all of our employees. Thank you for making it welcoming for our students. I look forward to seeing you at our back to kickoff event tomorrow from 8:00 to 10:00 at the High Desert Church. And I hope, Campbell, that you'll both come. You know that you're welcome at all of our events, so please feel free to come by. And we'll look forward to seeing many of our employees tomorrow and anticipate our students on Monday. So, thank you very much for coming. Carl?
Everybody else, welcome Tiffany. The drive really isn't that bad. But more importantly, the work here, it's worth it. You're going to really enjoy it here. You know, really want to thank Mike, Ramoni, and Shanti. I know you guys didn't get a lot of time off this summer. We all got a day here or there, you know, kind of mixed in some weekends and stuff.